If everybody'd have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacher, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us right down here. If you are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you're representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. There are no changes to the consent agenda. I'm going to get started with those consent cases. Again, just to remind you what I just said. These consent cases, if you want them removed today and you want to discuss them here, you'll have to stand up and let us know that. If not, they'll stay on consent either for approval or layover. So, and after I read each case, I'll ask if anyone wants them to be removed. Okay, we'll get started. It's rather lengthy here, so it's going to take a bit. Agenda item number six, case C three dash twenty-four dash twenty-three. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: eleven twenty-three North Twenty-Ninth Street and twenty-nine twenty-sixth Myrtle Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number seven, case C three dash twenty-four dash twenty-four. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of the surplus of city-owned property. Location: pin number two-two-one-three-six-five-zero-zero-zero-four and twenty-five thirty-six Florence Boulevard. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eight, case C three dash twenty-four dash twenty-five. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: nineteen-ten Ohio Street and twenty-six-twelve North Nineteenth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nine, case C three dash twenty-four dash twenty-six. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: twenty-six-nineteen North Nineteenth Avenue, twenty-six-twenty-three North Nineteenth Avenue, and twenty-six-twenty-four North Nineteenth Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number ten, case C three dash twenty-four dash twenty-seven. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: fifteen-oh-two North Seventeenth Street, fifteen-thirty North Seventeenth Street, fifteen-fifteen North Eighteenth Street, fifteen-seventeen North Eighteenth Street, fifteen-oh-nine North Eighteenth Street, nineteen-nineteen Charles Street, seventeen-nineteen Charles Street, seventeen-seventeen Charles Street, seventeen-fifteen Charles Street, seventeen-fourteen Charles Street, sixteen-twenty-nine Ohio Street, and nineteen-oh-one Pinkney Street. Anyone wish to have these removed? That's removed.
Sorry, a question out of ignorance. If we are interested in those properties as a nonprofit, do we want it to stay on the consent, or do we want to have it removed?
You'd probably want to have it stay on the consent. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Yep. All right. We'll leave that on. Agenda item number eleven, case C three dash twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: twenty-fifty-four North Eighteenth Street, twenty-sixty North Eighteenth Street, twenty-sixty-two North Eighteenth Street, twenty-sixty-four North Eighteenth Street, twenty-three-nineteen North Eighteenth Street, twenty-two-oh-four North Eighteenth Street, twenty-two-oh-eight North Eighteenth Street, twenty-two-thirteen North Eighteenth Street, twenty-two-oh-one North Sixteenth Street, twenty-two-oh-three North Eighteenth Street, twenty-two-fourteen North Eighteenth Street, twenty-two-sixteen North Eighteenth Street, twenty-two-eighteen North Eighteenth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twelve, case C three dash twenty-four dash twenty-nine. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: fifteen-oh-two North Twenty-eighth Street, sixteen-fifteen North Twenty-ninth Street, sixteen-seventeen North Twenty-ninth Street, twenty-eight-ten Charles Street, twenty-eight-twelve Charles Street, twenty-eight-thirteen Franklin Street, twenty-eight-fifteen Franklin Street, twenty-eight-sixteen Charles Street, twenty-eight-nineteen Seward Street, twenty-eight-twenty-six Charles Street, twenty-eight-thirty Charles Street, and twenty-eight-thirty-four Charles Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirteen, case C three dash twenty-four dash thirty. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: twenty-four-thirteen Spalding Street, thirty-eight-twenty-four North Twenty-fourth Street, and thirty-eight-oh-six North Twenty-fourth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number fourteen, case C three dash twenty-four dash thirty-one. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: twenty-six-eleven Lake Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number fifteen. Case C three dash twenty-four dash thirty-three. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: twenty-seven sixty and twenty-seven sixty-two Grant Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number sixteen, case C three dash twenty-four dash thirty-four. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: twenty-five fifty-two Spencer Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number seventeen, case C three dash twenty-four dash thirty-five. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: an irregular-shaped parcel, parcel zero-nine-one-zero-seven-zero-two-two-eight-four, located adjacent to the southwest of thirty-four-oh-four South One Hundred Forty-fourth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eighteen, case C ten dash twenty-four dash three. See twelve dash twenty-four dash four. Applicant Chad Schuler. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Schuler addition, a minor plat outside city limits, with approval of a rezoning from AG to DR along with approval of a waiver to section fifty-three-nine-nine sidewalks. Location: south of Two Hundred Thirty Fifth Street and Edgewater Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty, case C ten dash twenty-four dash seven. See twelve dash twenty-four dash eight. Applicant TD Squared Engineering and Surveying. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Starwood South Replat Four, a minor plat inside city limits along with the approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district for a portion of the site. Location: sixty-six-oh-nine North Ninety-Ninth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-two, case C ten dash twenty-four dash eleven. See twelve dash twenty-four dash twelve. Applicant Celebrity Homes Inc. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Woodbrook Valley South, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R four. Location: southwest of Hundred Fifty, Hundred Eighty-Fifth Street and Kansas Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-three, case C ten dash twenty-four dash thirteen. See twelve dash twenty-four dash fourteen. Applicant Metropolitan Community College. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Fort Omaha Expansion Replat One, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R four and GI to R four along with the expansion of the area of civic importance overlay district for a portion of the site. Location: northwest of Thirtieth Street and Sorensen Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-six. Case C seven dash eight dash seventy-three. Applicant Metropolitan Community College. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow college and university services in a R four district. Location: northwest of Thirtieth Street and Sorensen Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-four, case C ten dash twenty-three dash two-fifteen. See ten dash twenty-three dash two-sixteen. Applicant Backcountry Holdings One LLC. It is on for approval. Request revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of Rainwood Park, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to GI. Location: east of Hundred Eighth and McKinley Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-five, case C ten dash twenty-four dash one. See eleven dash twenty-four dash two. Applicant Foundations Development LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a rezoning from DR and R six to R six along with approval of a planned unit development overlay district. Location: one-twenty-eight oh-five Fort Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. We will do that. That's agenda item number twenty-five. Okay, got it. Agenda item number twenty-six, case C ten dash twenty-four dash five. Applicant Twelve-Thirteen Jones LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from DS to CBD, properties located within an area of civic importance overlay district. Location: twelve-thirteen Jones Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-seven, case C ten dash twenty-four dash twenty-two. Applicant Douglas County School District sixty-six. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from DR to R four. Location: seventy-eight-oh-two Haskell Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-nine, case C ten dash twenty dash forty-seven. Applicant Woodsonia South Streams LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for South Streams. Location: southeast of Two Hundred Fourth and Q Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-one, case C eight dash twenty-four dash fifteen. Applicant Ramsey Alexis Alex Alexis. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow auto sales in the CC District. Location: ninety-six-oh-six F Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-two, case C eight dash twenty-four dash seventeen. Applicant Russ Brune. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in the CC District. Location: two-oh-one-oh-two and two-oh-one-ten Clark Circle. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-three, case C eight dash ninety-one dash eight. Applicant Hawkins Construction Company. It's on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to a special use permit to allow a landfill, non-protrusible solid waste disposal in the GI District. Location: fifty-five-oh-six South Sixtieth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-four, case C eight dash twenty-four dash eighteen. Applicant Deborah Perotto. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow a daycare general in the R four district. Location: one-thirty-seven-oh-eight Laramore Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-seven, case C seven dash four dash one-eight-nine. Applicant Morning Star Evangelical. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R two district. Location: three-three-one South Eighty-Fifth Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number three, case C eight dash seventeen dash sixteen. Applicant Robert Cozal. It is on for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to a special use permit to allow convenient storage in a community commercial district, properties also located within the Ponca Hills Environmental Overlay District. This was laid over from our June seventh meeting of last year. Location: northeast of Highway seventy-five and Interstate six-eighty. Anyone wish to have this removed? Agenda item number five, case C three dash twenty-four dash twenty-one. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for layover. Request approval of the nineteen-oh-four Farnham Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location: nineteen-oh-four Farnham Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty-five, case C eight dash twenty-four dash sixteen. Applicant Brad Bader. It is on for layover. Request approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the LC District. Location: thirty-three forty-seven and thirty-three forty-three Ames Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, got it, sir. That will be removed. Okay, those are the items that are on consent. Before I ask for a vote from the Planning Department, I mean Planning Board, we're going to take a vote, and if those items are left on consent, there'll be no further action taken on those items, agenda items today. So, if you weren't here and you missed it, here's your opportunity. But if there isn't, I'm going to ask for a motion from the Board for those items that are on consent for approval.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-six, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, will you please record the vote?
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero? Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the consent items on for layover?
Motion to layover cases three and five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Ms. Rosacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, so that's the end of the consent cases that were left on the consent agenda, so no further action. Thank you for coming down. You are welcome to stay, or we thank you for coming down. We're going to do them right now? Okay. Okay. So, we're going to go ahead and do the two cases that were taken off of consent. Agenda item number twenty-five is case C ten dash twenty-four dash one. See eleven dash twenty-four dash two. Applicant Foundations Development LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a rezoning from DR and R six to R six along with approval of a planned unit development overlay district. Location: one-twenty-eight oh-five Fort Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Rob Woodling, Foundations Development, one-eight-eight-six, South Hundred Twenty-Sixth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm the applicant. What we're proposing here is a senior affordable housing, mixed-income project on Hundred Twenty-Eighth and Fort. What we've done so far is we've worked with the city to try and place the building in a position where Fort Street, which eventually will be widened, we won't have, there won't be a sound barrier have to be created. So, we've pushed our building as far north as possible. And let me just show you a site plan here. So, what we've, what we've done is we've tried to push it away from the residential neighbors as much as we can. Where the rear yard setback to the, to the homes on the south is thirty-five feet. We're actually Hundred Twenty-seven feet. The interior side yard to the east is a ten-foot setback. We're at about a hundred feet. And so, we've, we've tried to make a conscious effort to push this as far away from, from neighbors as possible. We've also, our traffic will not go through the neighborhood. We go directly to Fort Street. And we've done some studies with our engineers about where the best place is to put that drive so it's the safest for people entering and exiting off of Fort Street. Part of our plans will be to create turn lanes on Fort Street, both directions, both coming east and west. We had a neighborhood meeting on December twenty-seventh where we were able to present this to the neighbors and get some feedback. One of the, the requested items were privacy fences. And what we've committed to do at that meeting was at any places in the existing fence line where there's a gap, we would fence that in if, if the neighbors so requested to create the privacy for their, their yards. We also have a pretty extensive landscaping plan. Let me first show you our building elevation. So, there's our, our building elevation. We have quite a bit of brick, different elevations, different depths on the building to create an attractive product that we think that, that will fit into the neighborhood and do the, our clients well. Beyond that, let me, one more exhibit here I'd like to show you. There we go. So, here, here's our landscaping plan where we provide significant landscaping to the neighbors to try to enhance the, a buffer zone between the neighbors and, the neighbors and our property. One of the other things with this, this PUD that was requested by the city was to have the site development standards be to R five and not R six. So, we're actually reducing density by about fifty percent to get to the sixty-four units. So, we've tried to do our best to, to follow those guidelines and present a plan that's acceptable to all. So, be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Oh, I'm sorry. Some other items that came up from that meeting that I just wanted to address real quick is there's a question about is there a need for more senior affordable housing in Omaha, Nebraska? And we commissioned a study in, over the summer that shows the Omaha metro area is in need of seventy-eight-hundred senior affordable housing units, and we currently have twenty-six-hundred. So, there's a significant need for senior affordable housing in the metro area at this time. So, be more than happy to answer any questions you may have after any other folks.
I just have one, one question for you. So, how are you going to verify? And first of all, how do you define senior living?
It's fifty-five or over.
Okay, so how are you going to verify residents that are fifty-five or over then? I assume you're going to get birth data and...
Yes.
You're going to limit it strictly to... You're gonna limit it strictly to senior living?
Senior living, correct.
Only?
Yep. And with the affordable housing piece, we have a lot of other pieces of information we gather from folks beyond a standard criminal background check and credit check and landlord references. We also do quite a significant amount of compliance work on, on totaling up what that income level is to see if they qualify for the affordable, the affordable units. Yeah, so hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Rob, have you, have you built one of these here in town before?
Uh, yeah, we have about three-hundred-and-fifty units in Omaha, from Millard Senior Residences on Hundred Fifty-Sixth and S Street to Kidder Heights, Sixtieth and J Street, Swanson Heights, Fifty-Sixth and Swanson, Twenty-Third and Q, South Ridge Senior Living, and then on Fourteenth and Castile are Hillside Senior Apartments.
How many people were at that meeting?
Uh, nine.
Nine?
Nine people.
Okay.
At our neighborhood meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? You have to come on up and give your name and address, please.
We got this notification pretty late in the game because it was Christmas.
We need your name and address.
Okay. Last name Yurikov, Y U R I K O V, fourth name Galina, and address one-two-eight zero-six, Camden Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight, one-six-four.
Thank you.
We got this notification from the city and from the developer, pretty late in the game, it, it is holidays, it is, Christmas was, and New Year, and we came to the meeting, and it was nine or ten other people, they were not, they're not able to come today to this because they work, so they can't have sent us. And we are against about this development for a lot of reasons, but we were not able to retain an attorney before, because it is holidays, and we are trying to do this right now. So we would like to take this content out of approval today, for today.
Do you, do you have a reason why you'd like to not see it go through?
Yeah, it is a lot of reasons. It is very close to our property, the traffic is horrible, not enough lights, and it is very small area, but it is a lot of reasons that I would like, we would like more attorney to present this.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Galina.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing before we hear from Eric. Any comments, questions from the Board? Rob, did you wanna come up and address anything that Galina had to say?
Rob Woodling, Foundations Development, yeah, unfortunately with the, the timing of the December submittal, it doesn't lend itself to a, a meeting time that is conducive. I mean, it's either right before Christmas, or, or it's after Christmas, and if anybody's like me, they're still shopping a couple days before Christmas, so I tried to push it after to make it convenient for as many people as possible.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, so this site is a little unique. It does have split zoning currently with R six and D R, and then you have adjacent commercial directly to the west, which, you know, it's, it's a little unusual. Most of the commercial, of course, is at the intersection of Hundred Thirty-second or Hundred Twenty-fifth. The R six piece used to be a former utility. As Rob had mentioned, he's utilizing a tool with the more restrictive of the R five and R six, and what that allows for is the density of the low-density residential R five zoning district with a form in the apartment style that's allowed with the R six. But yes, it is the more restrictive, which it means increased buffer yards from those adjacent residential properties. Rob had touched how far back they are and showed a landscaping plan that has dense landscaping, but then the, the density and the height follows the R five zoning, which is more consistent with the surrounding single-family homes. So this is a tool that has been very successful and utilized throughout the city. We do acknowledge that, that Fort Street, you know, there, the city recognizes the need for enhancements and widening of that. There's been a lot of discussions on that, and there's, you know, a certain project, to an extent, of Fort Street that's in the C I P for a number of years down the road. So city recognizes that, obviously, you know, there's a lot of projects in need throughout the city, so Public Works Department will continue to look through that with other city staff and departments. I, I don't have too many specifics that I feel the need to discuss. You know, the report talks about the parking, and Rob is very familiar, and, you know, as he listed off his projects, you know, the parking needs for his clientele with the senior affordable housing. So, you know, he's shown time and again with those projects, you know, really what parking levels are in need of support. So unless there's any specific questions, staff recommend, oh, before I read the recommendation, we hear frequently about this January Planning Board meeting about the timing and the holidays, and we understand that, obviously, we do have a, a set schedule of a Planning Board meeting, you know, the first Wednesday of every month. We did send out our notices earlier to account for the holidays when there is no mail service for Christmas and New Years, so, but we recognize that. With that being said, this will still need to go to City Council, and that will take some time to get on that agenda, so there is, there is ample time to have additional conversation with neighbors, or, you know, further dialogue between the applicant, or if they have questions for the city. So I did just want to throw that out there, that this does need to continue on to City Council. And at the earliest, that would be late February, really, when, when you look at the timing and the number of readings that are, are required. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from D R and R six to R six, and approval of the P U D subject to meeting the three conditions in the report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any additional comments, questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
Remove approval of the rezoning from D R to R six, and R six to R six, and approval of the P U D subject to meeting the three conditions outlined in the report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, continuing on, the other item that was on consent for layover was taken off. Agenda item number thirty-five, case C eight dash twenty-four dash sixteen. Applicant Brad Bader. It was on for layover. Request approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the L C district. Location thirty-three forty-seven and thirty-three forty-three Ames Avenue. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Brad Bader, one-seven-two-two-five Clay Street, Bennington, Nebraska, six-eight-zero-zero-seven. We just received our response to our application yesterday in the mail, and had left a couple items out, needed some clarification, and didn't have any trouble putting all that information and documentation together just from yesterday afternoon. I mean, less than twenty-four hours, we got all this put together. And quite frankly, I'm just hoping that we can move forward a little quicker because of the need in the community for us trying to get this facility open for the, for the girls in the, in the community. And another, another delay on that unfortunately would be kinda detrimental. We understand the process, we don't wanna cut corners or skip anything, but I have formally sent off emails with all the documentation that was requested and asked it for. A lot of it has to do with staff, and one of the partners that will be operating the facility is here as well to speak to you and answer any questions. My side of the majority of this has to do more with the facility, and I'm happy to answer any of those types of questions in relation to parking or landscaping or square footages of, of space and things like that, and she can speak more to the operations and the staffing that we have in place if anyone has any questions on my side.
Not really a question, Brad, but when this meeting was set, the Planning Department didn't have enough information at that time. You've since submitted that information, but they're not, they need more time to look through all the information, find out if there's any other questions or requirements that they need. So I understand that you wanna move this forward, but they need some, the, the department needs more time to give us a proper recommendation.
Is there any other questions that can be answered right now that could help mitigate those concerns or move that forward?
Unfortunately, we don't know all the questions, 'cause we haven't had the opportunity to look at all the information. So I'm sure there's questions, but we don't know all the questions. That's why we, we need more time. That's why it was on consent for layover.
Yeah, I know, a lot of it had to do with basic staffing kinda questions and a couple things with, you know, are you putting trees in accordance to the landscaping designs and stuff like that? But it was all fairly small items. Like I said, we were able to take it, take it in just a couple hours and re, resubmit anything that was needed or assumed missing. I just hate to have my lack of maybe detail on this matter to fall to the detriment of the girls that were not able to serve for another month is, is my main concern.
And we understand that, the department understands that, but it's that attention to detail that's so important for the department and important for the Board, so.
And if I might add, Chairman, as well, so not only the department, we need that information as well as the Board. We don't have access to their email, so we don't have any of the information that you had sent. We need that information as well. And in addition, this is a youth facility, right?
Correct.
So we wanna make sure that the detail is exactly the way it should be per the licensing requirements. I don't even know if it's licensed or permitted yet. We don't have that information. We can't make a decision without all that information. It just be a responsibility.
And we have received our C O.
That's great. We wish we'd had it for this meeting, we don't have it for this meeting, so unfortunately, it's probably gonna be laid over, and you're gonna have to produce that, and then we can bring it back up next.
That part was all produced, but.
Yeah.
I think I just should, just sorta add that, that these kinds of things do receive a lot of scrutiny for good reasons. And while I don't doubt that you probably have everything all, you know, put together that's been requested, it just has to be in a pack-up form so that the staff can review it and make their appropriate recommendation to us, and so I'm afraid that we just can't consider it at this point.
Is there, so just knowledge moving forward, and, and there was a lot of things that kinda got brought to, to my attention just day of submission, basically, and, and since we have done those things, obviously, as far as door knocking and speaking to the community, having a neighborhood meeting about what's happening in the facility and things like that have all already previously happened, is that all required essentially, those types of things prior to the application? Or is there some sort of, you know, from application to now, which is where we're at, we have done anything above and beyond what was asked? We just didn't know some of it before the application process.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Eric answer.
Well, I think before I get into the city's commentary, I'd like to hear from other proponents or opponents and get through that, and then that's where I stand for my comments.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Brad. Any other, what, did I? Okay, any other proponents?
Felicia Frisell, two thousand and eight, North Thirty-first, Timber Creek, Total Care. I will be ahead, in charge of all of the operations and primarily answering all of your questions that, and concerns that you have. I understand the scrutiny and the importance. I've been working with children for a very long time, so we do understand and we appreciate your patience, and we have everything that you need. Now, I'm confident that you guys will be satisfied, so we look forward to seeing you guys soon.
Good, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so just to address from the city's side, obviously, we're recommending layover. We think there is substantial amount of information that is either unanswered or has not been provided with the application. You know, obviously, it's a, it's a fairly quick window. Whenever we do this on a monthly cycle, we receive an application, and it's pretty much the report comes out for, in this month, thirty-seven different cases that we processed through in about two and a half weeks. You know, we don't have the capacity or time to chase other information down, so we obviously just look at what has been submitted to us. So, you know, I, I think, especially with group living facilities, there are several supplemental code sections that apply that is very detailed and thorough. While, yes, there, there was a lot of information in the submitted operating statement, there was still a lot of missing components from those code sections, you know, discrepancies on the, the finished square footage of, of, you know, the building, you know, what is the amount of bedroom space? There's no floor plan that indicates. You know, there was generic information as far as there'd be an executive director, licensed professionals, program manager, but no specific details. Obviously, it, it appears that Felicia, with the Timber Creek Organization, will, you know, fill that role, but there's a lot of information that we don't know, and especially when we're dealing with youth between the ages of thirteen and nineteen. Are these individuals, you know, are they wards of the state? Are they, you know, in the legal system? Yes, there's some mention of that, but to what extent? Are they, you know, are there, you have guardians that live in a, you know, a different home? So just group living facilities, there's a lot of information that i- is really buttoned up and, and tied down. Typically, there's a lot of opposition, as you're aware, that, that come down before these cases, but we need to make sure that city staff is able to answer questions for who is living in this facility. We don't feel like we have that information at this time to be able to do that. So whether you have questions or City Council has questions as this moves forward, hopefully in the future, we need to be comfortable in our role and be able to answer that questions, and we are not in a position at this time to be able to do that. So I think it's, it's very clear as far as the city stands that this needs to be laid over. So our recommendation is for layover.
Thank you, Eric. Any additional comments, questions?
Just one real brief one. So it might be a good idea for city planning and your organization to get together so that you understand exactly what the city is looking for, so that when you come back to us, you have everything in order. I would suggest that.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
The first two items on the regular agenda are administrative items only, there will be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one, case C ten dash eight dash two-two-oh, C twelve dash eight dash two-twenty-one. Applicant B H I Development, Inc. Request final plat approval of Kensington Park Lots sixteen through eighteen, Outlot D, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from A G to D R and M U. Location, north of Two Hundred Seventh and Q Streets. May we hear, oh, Eric, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this is the third phase of Kensington Park plat. It's for three mixed-use slots and one outlot. The total Kensington Park area consists of ninety-two acres and a total of eighteen mixed-use slots. The revised preliminary plat that consisted of this phase and this configuration was approved by City Council July twenty-first, twenty twenty. The applicant will need to provide some updated items with the final subdivision agreement as well as place some notes on the final plat my L Rs before City Council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from A G to D R and M U, and approval of the final plat subject to the two conditions prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any additional comment or questions?
I, I just had a question with regards to the access points here. I just wanna be clear on that. It says there's several, there's no direct access to Q Street from any lot or outlot and so on and so forth on there. Where will the access be from this development, then, if not onto Q Street?
The, the access will be via a public street from Q Street, but not a direct access from the lot to Q Street. So there's not a driveway from each lot or outlot, that's what that comment means, but there is a street network that, of course, connects to Q.
The development.
Yeah, to the development, then, but then those driveways are off that internal street, you know, not directly to the arterial.
Very good, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from A G to D R and M U. Approval and final plat subject to addressing the two conditions of the staff report prior to forwarding to the President City Council for final action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number two, case C ten dash twenty-three dash two-seventeen, C twelve dash twenty-three dash two-eighteen. Applicant K U S P Real Estate LLC. Request. Applicant K U S P Real Estate LLC, request final plat approval of Bedford Heights, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R four thirty-five to R six. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe and Flood Way overlay districts. Location seventy-sixty Bedford Avenue. Eric.
Yeah, so the preliminary plat, um, of Bedford Heights was recommended for approval by planning board October fourth and approved by city council on December fifth. Uh, this is the final plat for the entirety of the development, which consists of, um, a, a residential low-density rental product within two lots and one outlot, or two lots and two outlets, my apologies. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R four thirty-five to R six and approval of the final plat subject to the two conditions prior to city council.
Any additional comments, questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from R five thirty-five to R six. Approval of the final plat subject to addressing the following conditions prior, uh, prior to forwarding the request to the council for final action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay, agenda item number four, case C three dash twenty-four dash nineteen. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the NODO TIF redevelopment project plan. Location south and west of twelfth and Nicholas Streets. Don, you're up.
Uh, yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. I'll begin by getting you oriented here. Uh, we have a view looking north from the Schwab Ballpark. This is Cummings. The project site is two vacant lots adjacent to, um, twelfth Street. On this block here that's largely vacant, uh, has the one historic building kind of in the middle of it. So it's the western edge of that block, uh, that's at the southeast, that's to the southeast of twelfth and Nicholas. It's in the Millwork Commons Development where we've seen a lot of activity recently. Uh, this project will be a five-story mixed-use development with about twelve thousand four hundred square feet of first-floor commercial space and seventy-eight market-rate apartment units on the upper four stories. Uh, this site, um, well, uh, well, included with the development of this site will be sixteen angled parking spaces developed along the twelfth Street right-of-way along with appropriate streetscaping. This project is in an N C E, um, uh, zone, so the, um, design of the public improvements and the design of the building have been reviewed by our urban design team and are in compliance with that N C E zoning. Uh, the applicants intend to lease about a hundred and twenty spaces from Park Omaha, who is in the process of developing a public parking garage immediately north of this development site. Uh, the developer of this project is NODO LLC, which is managed by the White Lotus Group, uh, in Aruun Agarwal. I would note this site, um, is in a, uh, extremely blighted area, so it's eligible for a twenty-year TIF term and it's also in the influence area of the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Plan, uh, area. So this project will be making a contribution to the construction of the streetcar line. Total project investment is a little north of, uh, nineteen million dollars. They're requesting one million nine hundred two thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars in TIF support. That's tax increment financing support. Uh, this project meets the required criteria of the city's TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. And we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Drew Sova, uh, two-four-one-zero, South one hundred eighty-six Circle Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-zero. Uh, I'm here on behalf of White Lotus Group, here to, uh, obviously pledge my support for the project. Excited about the area in and of itself. It's an up-and-coming, uh, area and district with Millwork Commons. We're excited to potentially be a part of it. We appreciate Don and the TIF committee's support here and happy to answer any questions about the project.
I just have, uh, maybe a couple of quick questions for you, if you don't mind. So Don referred to the parking garage.
Yes.
Immediately north, is that going to be north, just north on Nicholas Street?
That is correct, yes.
Right across the street there? And have you already had discussions with the city with regards to leasing those spaces?
We have, uh, they're, yes. So, uh, we've been in conversations directly with Marco Floriani. Um, he has been spearheading that project for the last six months, I believe. Um, it's become more detailed in terms of its progress, I believe, within the next one to two weeks, per Marco's confirmation with, uh, to me, within the last week, they will be going out for an R F Q on the design, so they are to that stage in the process. Um, from there, they will be moving forward, obviously, with construction and we believe the timeframe is in line with where we will line up our construction so that as work coming online, that parking garage should be done conclus-, or concurrently.
Okay, and, and would, would those parking spaces that you'll have access to be dedicated to your residents only then?
That should be the case, yes. I believe that is the conversation that we've had with them, is that we are, and that one hundred and twenty numbers directly in conversations with Marco about what we would need from a commercial perspective on that ground floor, but more importantly, obviously, for the residents and what we would need there in terms of their demand on a daily basis.
And the reason I ask that is obviously with the College World Series, there, that's going to be an area where people might want to park.
Sure.
Right, so how are you going to monitor the fact that you're going to have people that are trying to park in the residence spots?
My understanding is they would be dedicated stalls. There would be an agreement between NODO LLC and the city in terms of reservation of a certain number of parking stalls.
But they'll still try and park in those spots, I'm sure.
I think that would be up to then the city and the, uh, R F Q process with design in terms of how they would, um, you know, reserve those stalls on a daily, uh, and weekly basis to prohibit those C W S guests from parking there.
I just hate to have your residents being, you know, for that ten days or whatever the College World Series does not have parking, so, thank you.
Drew, what's the number of stalls that the, that the garage is going to be?
I believe six hundred.
Any other ca-, questions for Drew? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? I thought she was a proponent. Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so, um, obviously we've had a lot of development in this area and we're excited for another project here, uh, to work with White Lotus Group on. Um, you know, we have been coordinating with them on the vacation of the alley, the east-west alley. Um, so you'll be seeing that on a future agenda at some point here. Um, you know, like, Mr. Pete, for your question, um, you know, our parking division has vast experience as far as leasing out a certain number of stalls for garages and, you know, either, there's different ways to do it, you know? Either you restrict access, you know, somewhere to the garage there, to the east, where, you know, the general public might not have access to, but somebody who, uh, works or, or lives in a specific place does, or there's other signage techniques. So, um, you know, our, our parking division of public works is definitely on that. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item number nineteen, case C twelve dash twenty-four dash six. Applicant Timothy Bangart, request preliminary and final plat approval of Bangart Addition, a minor plat outside city limits, along with approval of a waiver to section fifty-three-eight for a lot depth. Location ninety-two oh-five North one fifty-sixth Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yeah, uh, Tim Bangart, ninety-two oh-five North one hundred and fifty-six Bennington, six-eight-zero-zero-seven. And I'm the landowner and I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
Tim, I do have a quick question.
Sure.
Obviously with the report, we have a recommendation for the layover, the final plat, to have the submittal of pre-approval from N D regarding the septic system. So I don't, where do you stand on that? Has that been submitted to the state, you know?
No, not yet.
Do you have somebody working on that or?
We, we will, yeah. I just got all this notice in the mail yesterday, so.
Okay.
Kind of got the hit list to do and we'll, we'll provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public, public hearing. Eric.
Yeah, so the, the only reason this is not on the consent agenda is because we have a, um, a split recommendation, basically approval of the preliminary plat, but layover of the final plat to allow for that, uh, pre-approval from the state of Nebraska regarding septic system anytime a property is less than three acres in size. So we discussed, uh, there will be stipulations within the subdivision agreement about, uh, removal of access from one hundred and fifty-sixth Street if, if ever the properties adjacent to this is redeveloped or if it connects to, uh, city, city sanitary sewer service. So those will be accounted for in the subdivision agreement. So with that being said, staff recommends approval of the waiver to section fifty-three-eight for a lot depth, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the nine conditions and layover of the final plat.
Do we have a motion?
To approve the waiver section to create for a lot depth, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following nine conditions and layover of the final plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item number twenty-one, case C ten dash twenty-four dash nine, C twelve dash twenty-four dash ten. Applicant one eighty-three Maple LLC, request preliminary plat approval of West Maple Hills, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from A G to D R and M U. Location northeast of Big Elk Parkway and West Maple Road. And may we hear from the applicant, please?
Uh, good afternoon. Scott Brown, Quantum Real Estate, nineteen twenty-five North one hundred and twentieth Street. I think I spoke enough of the pre-meeting, so, uh, I'm just here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents?
Uh, Chairman Rosenbaum, members of the Omaha Planning Board. My name is Jim Lang. I'm an attorney at eighty-five twenty-sixth F Street here in Omaha. I represent the property owners to the east, uh, a Ralph and Marion Nielsen. Uh, they own the thirty-five acres just northwest of one hundred and eightieth and West Maple Road. Uh, as we discussed this morning, uh, we are not in objection to the use of the property, uh, to the west here, here that's being proposed. Our concerns are like really threefold. Number one, uh, the one hundred and eighty-second Street, Street being placed on the Nielsen property. Uh, we understand of the access points and the need for the street being there. However, that's still a concern. And number two is the embankment it's going to create on the Nielsen property and the effect on the Nielsen property. And number three, we want to make sure we retain the, uh, number of, uh, mixed-use acres we're entitled to and that is addressed in the report. But right now, uh, Joel Jackson, a civil engineer from Des Moines is with me. Joel's also the grandson of Ralph and Marion, uh, Nielsen. So I'm going to have, uh, Joel come up and, and, uh, address the board here on the concerns relative to the embankment and one hundred and eighty-second Street.
Jim.
Hi, Joel Jackson, four-zero-zero-nine River Oaks Drive, Des Moines, Iowa, five-oh-three-one-two. Thanks, Jim. As he explained, I'm the grandson of Ralph and Marion Nielsen located immediately east of this development on one eighty-two oh-six, uh, West Maple Road. As currently drawn or has currently proposed by the adjacent developer, um, we are not opposed to the development. We understand that there's a lot of development happening in the area and we think that's good for the area and good for the city of Omaha. What we would like to is work with the adjacent developer a little bit closer, as far as the horizontal and the vertical alignments of the road that is currently proposed on my grandparents' property. So I just have a few exhibits explaining this a little bit more to the commission. On this exhibit, um, the red line indicates the property line, um, between the adjacent property owner and, uh, the proposed development. And as you can see, as drawn here, uh, the road is drawn entirely, um, on the one hundred and eighty, on the Ralph and Marion parcel. Um, this is the access point at the existing stoplight. We understand that that's not going to move. We're in agreeable, agreement with that access point and the location to the north. Um, our discussion is more on where this road could possibly shift or where the north-south location of that is. Can you zoom out a little bit?
Joel, on top, you can, um, move the dial, you know?
Perfect. Thank you. So, this is an aerial with, uh, the adjacent developer's plan overlaid on top of it. And this is the, the access point down here. And as you can see, as the road goes to the north, um, it's entirely on Ralph and Marion's property. And you can also see there's a significant embankment placed onto Ralph and Marion's property, raising the elevation by approximately twenty-two feet from where it sits today. Ralph and Marion's property through here is very flat. Um, currently the hillside is more on the, is entirely on the adjacent parcel and they're re-grading to push that hillside over onto Ralph and Marion's property, uh, to create, you know, essentially an eighty-to-ninety-foot area of undevelopable land with that newly found, uh, hillside. This is, this is the blue area that was shown on the previous exhibit showing, uh, the area that's proposed to be impacted on the Ralph and Marion parcel. The yellow area is the creek and what will be required to be an essentially non-developable area in the future. So this blue area is taking away a, a very significant portion of the, of what's left that could be developed in the future and getting pretty close over to where the current house, uh, sits here. Last one. So this is showing the, the road as it's currently drawn going north, as we kind of discussed. But I drew in blue, could, is there a possibility to adjust the road so it bends over and the round, the proposed roundabout on the northwest corner of the property, northeast corner of the development, is shifted to the west? I did play around a little bit in CAD the last couple of days. Um, I just kind of found out about all this, uh, here recently as far as the proposed road location and proposed road vertical alignment. Uh, so I didn't have a, a ample amount of time to be able to work with the adjacent developer. But our request in front of the commission would just be to add a condition that would state something to the effect of requiring the adjacent property owner to come to a mutually agreed-upon location, both vertically and horizontally of one hundred and eighty-second Street as it goes to the north.
So Joel, that, moving that over, could you leave that up there for me, please?
Yep.
Moving that over, you're still going to have a, a, a bank going down. It's just going to be taking less of, less room. Is that, is that kind of where you're going with that?
Yeah, I, I think the preference would be to lower that road down so then it, it works better with, you know, right now it works really well with the property owner to the west, but it doesn't work great for the property owner to the east for future, uh, development. So lowering that down, you know, coming to a middle ground on, on where it sits today as far as elevation, so then it impacts both properties, uh, equally for both location vertically and horizontally.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Joel?
Joel, how many, you know how many acres are left? If, if that road is.
If you come to an agreement and that road is placed on your property, grandparents' property, how many acres would be left on their property then, do you know?
So currently there's thirty-five acres on the property, um, but there's the large portion that is the creek that can't be developed. So somewhere around twenty-five acres total is developable in my, um, rough calculation. This would take approximately five acres from it, once you include the roadway and the embankment as it's drawn right now. So it really leaves a very, uh, limited area, you know, knowing that you kind of, kind of work in this, this odd triangle for development versus being able to, to go farther over.
And I assume, and you don't have to answer if you don't want to, but I assume at some point there in the future, the family may want to sell that property to, to a future developer and, and, and so you're, you're trying to retain at least a sellable piece of property, I would assume.
That's correct. Yeah, my grandparents are currently ninety-two and ninety-five years old and so they're not going to be around, uh, forever, knowing that, hey, this will be a developed corner of, of the city based off everything else that's going on in the area, probably sooner than later. But being able to retain as much value But being able to retain as much value and what makes most sense for it to be able to develop and, and sell at some juncture in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joel? Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Scott, did you want to come up and address any of Joel's plans, ideas?
Yes, as we talked about in the pre-meeting, Scott Brown, Quantum Real Estate, nineteen twenty-five North Hundred Twentieth Street, Omaha. As we, as we discussed in pre-meeting, the circ, the traffic roundabout is already set in stone. The access point off Maple Street is set in stone. And so we generally don't have any ability to modify the plans. And again, our offer to them to purchase the land is also to include the unbuildable land as well. And so it's a fair market value situation. And that's, and also too, in a normal situation, normally half of the property, half of the arterial is on their land, half is on our land. This is a situation where we're actually buying land and building the arterial ourselves, or the, the road, I guess, in arterial.
But your client knew what they were buying.
I've been in partnership on this land fairly recently, and our original partner has owned this land since maybe, oh, I'd say, early nineties. So I'm part with Tom Bann on this property, and Tom has been the owner of the land for a long time. That answer your question?
Not really. Your current client, that we were developing this for, knew where the access points were and knew what would have to be done.
Absolutely. Yes. There's not, there's no, there's no wiggle room.
Yeah. So you, I assume that they knew that there may be an issue with regards to the access point on, from Maple Street, potential.
I was, I don't know what issue you're talking about.
Hundred and eighty-second street. So that's, you said that's set in stone, right?
Yes.
That's set. They knew that that's set. They also know that that's an entrance and exit to the driveway for the family.
Correct.
Right? They knew that. Knew that there may be a potential problem or issue if you couldn't acquire that property. I would assume, if I'm the client, I'd, I'd want to know that.
We haven't really had that discussion.
Could we bring Ryan up and talk a little bit about this as well?
That's what I was going to say. I'd, maybe Ryan Haas could help sort of shed some light on the roundabout, the position of the road today, and even if this project didn't occur, how that affects this neighboring property in the future anyway. Because if that road's going there no matter what, they've already got an issue with something that affects their valuation, I guess, in the end, or the developability. So I guess I'd like to understand the permanence of that road's plan as it applies to today and in the future, even if this project did not occur.
Joel, could I get you to put your map up of your solution? It shows where the plans have the road in, it shows where your solution for the road goes. That, Ryan, would you want to come up and, just using this map, if you can answer Jorge's answer, questions that he had for you, and, and give us some more insight into the solution that Joel submitted?
Yeah, Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. So let's see if I can get this to work here, if this shows up on my surface on the screen. So that's, that's the challenge right there, is the, I've zoomed in on where the roundabout would be located, approximately here. The challenge is how the plat of Indian Point took place to the north there. So you can see this house. That's an exist, existing platted rightaway and street. You can kind of see how it points to the south and east diagonally. There's design parameters on how quickly we can curve this back. This, the street curves can only be so sharp. And then there's design parameters on the footprint of a roundabout as well. So I'm going to switch over to illustrate kind of what that looks like. So you can see that lot there and that lot, that property corner, there's only so far or so quickly you can curve around to get to the, to the roundabout there. So that's when we say that that point is fixed, that's a, that's a set point. We can't take away someone's house or acquire a lot in order to get that moved further to the west. So within those parameters of the, the minimums and maximums and the, the design criteria that we have for streets and roundabouts, if there's anything that can be done within those parameters to move further west to try to mitigate impacts on the neighboring property, that's certainly something we could consider. But I, and I don't know, because I, I didn't lay this out, I can't speak for TD two, but it would appear that it's close or, or fairly close to as, as far to the west as we could get it, given where the, the existing stub is to the north, the rightaway and street stub.
Okay, so if that, that the roundabout on the north is in a fixed spot, I mean, that's, like you said, where it's got to go, and where the access to Maple Street is fixed spot, or Joel's saying you could curve that road back, is that a possibility?
That's up...
Make the road curve more onto their property and then you'd have to swing it back to your roundabout.
As you get up into here, that would be something that would be up to the parties to kind of try to resolve, if there's something that can be done in this segment here to move the street further to the west. Again, we're still bound by, you know, the, the curve requirements for the per city standards, but if that's something within those parameters that they could come to an understanding or an agreement where maybe the road is further to the west in that segment, that'd certainly be supported by the city.
Jorge, did you have additional questions for Ryan?
I think he answered them. My only other question would be, the placement of Hundred and eighty-second, whether this happens or not, is right there on their property in the future regardless?
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that's a fixed point. This is a fixed point. If, if this property came in first, you know, I would suspect it would just run, basically where TD two is showing it. So that's always a challenge. We, you know, we, we have the master plan requirements. This, this has to be a roundabout for reasons I could get into if you'd care to know. This is a through route going all the way east to west from Hundred Eightieth to Hundred Ninety-second. This is a through route. It's a parkway. That's a fixed point. So that, that's the challenge is when we don't get these, these properties to line up neatly with the master plan requirements, there has to be an acquisition from a party that maybe isn't thrilled about taking part in a land transaction. So we, we try to balance those sensitivities with the city's master plan requirements and, and infrastructure requirements.
Any other questions for Ryan?
Yep.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Scott, we asked Ryan to come up. I never, were you done with anything you wanted to say? I didn't give you the opportunity to...
Anything engineering related? Yes, I'm done.
Okay.
I don't have much knowledge of that area. And our engineer, Doug Kellner, is on, is on vacation, so I miscommunicated with him. So, otherwise he'd be here. Thank you.
Thanks. Any additional thoughts, questions from the board? Well, the only thing I'd, I'd say is, you know, I don't think you're opposed to the development, it doesn't sound like. And, and I'm hopeful that you guys can, can find a common solution. I don't know what that is. Did you want to call Jim or Joel back up? Either one, Jim or Joel, either one. I don't know what that is, but I would hope that, I think you're going to, I think you're... Just a second, Mike. Yeah. Give your name and address again, Joel.
Joel Jackson, four zero zero nine River Oaks Drive, Des Moines, Iowa, five oh three one two.
Thank you, Joel. And I understand you have a meeting scheduled on Monday?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
I'm hopeful that you can come together and find a common, I don't know what it is. You know, your, your solution might, your recommendation might be the solution. I don't know. If you can move that roundabout or adjust it a little bit, perhaps that might be the answer to do it. I understand exactly where you're coming from with regards to maintaining the property to a point where it is, at least in, in the future, sellable to a future developer.
Correct.
I get that. And because your grandparents have lived there for how many years?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two years, okay. And there's some consideration that has to be given for that as well. And I understand the development, and, and I'm all for the development, but we've got to find a way to make this work for both parties to be satisfied with it. And again, I'm not sure what that is, but at least you're throwing a proposal and a solution, possible solution out there, and I hope you guys can come to some sort of solution. Because it's going, ultimately, it's going to have to be worked out between you guys.
Yep.
To get it done, honestly.
And, and currently, as shown as far as this solution, this would be actually shifting the road entirely onto the adjacent property owner, you know. Is there a solution where we could just shift it thirty-five feet to the west, where it, it straddles the property line? And it did kind of appear from an engineering standpoint, without having all the data available, that maybe that roundabout could shift thirty-five feet to the west instead of what I've drawn here, which is seventy to eighty feet to the west. And still be able to, to match it and meet all the city standards to the north.
And I would encourage you to get with Public Works, too, with regards to some of that particularly as well. And, and, you know, that was one of the questions I was going to ask you, Scott, too, is why didn't you initially have TD Square, you know, draw the, the, the drive onto their property, onto your property, your client's property, instead of their property, kind of in this configuration? But you guys talk about that, it's probably nothing we can get into today.
Yep. So we just appreciate a little bit stronger condition of approval to make sure that, that is required.
Okay.
I think the situation here is everybody seems in favor of this project moving forward. The number one condition on the staff's recommendation is exactly that, that you, that the two parties resolve and find common ground so that you can, you can make this happen. You both want it to happen. You'll both benefit from it.
Yep.
And so if, if you can do that, and I think, I think our recommendations that have been put forward should give you the latitude to be able to do that.
Could something be added to, to say something about the actual vertical and horizontal alignment of the road, instead of just the acquisition of the property necessary for the road in that condition?
Then, then we become the developer, I think, so.
Eric will address that.
And there's, I mean, you know, traffic dictates, you know, slow angles and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
And that in itself will resolve that issue, in my judgment, anyway.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments before we turn it over to Eric? Eric?
Yeah, so just a few other items to note. We have a recommendation for approval, you know, specifically regarding the mixed-use plan. There's, there's some work that needs to be done specifically as it relates to the residential component of this. Now, if it's the larger retail lot that is, that is driving this development, you know, I want to make sure that the applicant is, is addressing these items in the recommendation report, you know, because there's quite a bit of modification that will need to be done for, for the residential component to, to meet code. And so I don't want, you know, if, if this moves forward today and the final plat comes back, I don't, you know, it may be a afterthought at this time, you know, maybe the residential isn't being thought through very much, but we do need to consider that. So I just want to point that out, that it is an important component. Whether that changes, you know, so I encourage the applicant to continue to coordinate with city staff on, on that. I don't think I have anything much else to add regarding, you know, the access. There's comments in here about some driveway location and, and things like that, making sure stacking for the proposed gas station is, is acceptable. So, you know, we touched on that in the pre-meeting, and of course, those apply. But, yeah, obviously, the Hundred and eighty-second Avenue is, is an important component. I would defer to Public Works if they were comfortable with a modification of, of one of the conditions that they are contributed for the report regarding the horizontal and vertical alignment. But I think it, it sounded pretty specific, so I guess I would get a little concerned about not ever coming to an acceptable solution and bogging down and not having a way out of that. So I, I'm not comfortable adding that language that Joel proposed. I don't know if, if you want to ask that to Ryan. Those are getting out of my expertise as far as what the planning department reviews. So I will say that, you know, if this preliminary plat does move forward, and there's a lot of conversations between the two parties, and, and the alignment changes or something changes, we can definitely incorporate that in when the final plat comes back. It's, you know, this isn't locking in stone, the location or anything like that. But considering the fixed points on both ends, with the parkway on the northeast portion of the subject site, as well as the access to the highway, you know, there's only so much wiggle room here, and I know it's important for both parties, and, and it does impact the, the amount of developable area on either side of the road. So I know it's important, but city staff is still comfortable moving forward with the recommendation for approval. And like you pointed out, the first condition is to acquire the land as necessary to make that happen and incorporate it into the plat. So we feel that it's pretty soundproof in, in being able to do that. Now, obviously, Joel had his thoughts to strengthen that, but I guess I already touched on that. So I will read the city's recommendation. If, if you want to ask Ryan regarding the specifics of the horizontal or vertical alignment, you could, you could pull him up, but otherwise, staff will keep it the same. This was a report that had the adding condition, so number twenty, there's twenty-seven conditions, just wanted to point that out. There was a comment from the NRD, just a small item. So if, if some of the parties don't have that, we can definitely fill them in afterwards. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and MU, subject to dismissal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement with the final plat, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the twenty-seven conditions in the report.
Okay. Is the board ready for a motion, or did you want to talk to Ryan? Or do you feel ready for the motion?
I'm ready.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'm ready. To approve the rezoning from AG to DR and MU, subject to dismissal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement with the final plat, approval of the preliminary plat subject to twenty-seven conditions in the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Good luck, guys.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate that all today.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number twenty-eight, case C ten dash two dash two sixty-two, applicant Woodhouse Auto Family, request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for West Dodge Station. Location, one eighty-three oh one Coming Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, my name is Caleb Van Wielden, and I'm with Lampard Neerson, fourteen seven one ten West Dodge Road.
What was your name again?
Caleb Van Wielden.
Okay.
With Lampard Neerson.
Okay, thank you.
Here on behalf of the applicant, Woodhouse Auto Group, or an LLC owned by Woodhouse Auto Group. Here with me today is John Bachman, who's with Eric and Sullivan, and Brett Edwards, who's with the Edwards Auto Group. This project in general is to facilitate a lot sale, a shifting of a lot line and a sale in between Woodhouse and Edwards Auto Group. So that's why Woodhouse's name is on the applications. They currently own West Dodge Station, replat eight lots one and two, and one of those two lots will be replatted and to facilitate a sale to Edwards, which is, just want to make that clear of who is here and why. I am here to answer any questions. A couple of small points that I wanted to bring up is in this process, we did have a public meeting. I believe there's members here today that were at that public meeting to discuss some of the issues that the neighborhood had with the project. We contacted everyone within the three-hundred-foot sphere that is required by the city. And then above and beyond, we emailed the SIDs to the north, their attorney directly, who distributed our notice of that public meeting to try to get as many residents as possible aware. We know the timing, as was brought up on others, is a little difficult with the holidays, but we tried to get the information out as quickly, as succinctly as possible to make people aware of that meeting. And we have taken many calls, Lampard Neerson has, to discuss the issues brought up with this project. We also have contacted the school directly, because it is adjacent to West Dodge Station Elementary. And the school, you know, briefly voiced approval that they didn't have an issue with what we were proposing. So with that being said, I will answer any questions you may have. And like I said before, we have John and Brett that can answer questions as well.
Maybe you, you know, and maybe one of the other gentlemen can answer the question, but, but you said that you've been fielding a lot of calls, your company's been fielding several calls from the neighbors, it sounds like, right?
Yeah, we've received several calls, yep.
Can you just give us a little bit of broad idea what's maybe some of those issues were that they've been bringing up?
Oh, yeah. The one I got most frequently was about the... Oh, yeah. The one I got most frequently was about the proximity from the residences and HWS Cleveland Boulevard. So, if you could turn on the overhead here. So, in the recommendation report, there was recommendation written for screening. In our original MU, we had matched the landscaping condition that was in the previous mixed-use agreement. Written in the rec report was, I believe, a six-foot barrier of some sort, can be trees. We had actually proposed at the public meeting, which is what you're seeing here, HWS Cleveland is right there, which it's hard to tell, but it's located right on the north side of the property. We had proposed kind of a berm with some shrubs and some trees on top of that, to help with that headlight screening in between the residences and the project. So, that was probably the number one item that was brought up for coordination. Also, traffic and safety and lighting was brought up at the public meeting, which we can talk about further if you'd like. But those were, those were a lot of the big ones.
So, were you, were you guys agreeable to maybe putting in a berm to answer some of the potential issues that they had?
Yeah, in the rec report, it was mandated that that screening be in there.
There's screening, but it doesn't say anything about a berm.
It doesn't say anything about a berm. This was an option we proposed. There was also other options to accomplish that same screening brought up, but this is kind of what we had shown at that public meeting. So, in the rec report, it just said screening, which we are more than happy to comply with.
Okay. But I just want to be clear on what your definition of screening is. Is it the berm?
It could be a berm, or it could be, we don't have design plans to bring with you today. This is kind of step one in the process. We are, we are not coming in with any sort of follow-up plans in the immediate future. This is, this is an option to accomplish low-level headlight screening, along with other options. That Edwards is, we were proposing this before, and now it's written in the report to have the screening, and we are happy to comply.
All right. Let me ask you a different way, then. Is a berm a reasonable request?
I believe, yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Do, on the lighting, is there anything that can be done about lighting, you know, during the evening or at night when the shop is closed? Is there?
So, I can answer a little bit, and then maybe Brett can provide more context. These, I mean, these are all going to be LED downlights. They're, they're very crisp. I mean, newer even streetlights compared to older streetlights, the direction of the light is a lot, lot cleaner. So, we were actually at a different Edwards dealership for the public meeting that had very clean downlights. You could look over the top and see, you know, dark sky on the backside, but then the parking lot was illuminated very well. So, don't think of an old football stadium where you can see it from 10 miles. I live next to one of those, so I'm very familiar with the effect. I can see it in my living room, yeah.
Is it likely to be similar to what would be?
Like, if an office building was built on this property, which I think would be allowed today, I think we determined like a six-story office building could be built as is today. Is it the same lighting that would be used in a parking lot like that?
It would be similar, except for obviously, the office building would be much taller. So, if there's lights on the building or upper-level stores, then the lighting would be slightly different. But your typical LED parking lot lights would be similar, yes. Anything else?
Any additional questions for Caleb? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Caleb.
Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Your bet. Come on up, give your name and address.
Brett Edwards, 21120 Greenview Road. So, I would be for the project, and, you know, I can answer questions if you'd like a little bit more. I mean, we don't have a specific use for the property, but yes, any lighting that we do is definitely done with LED, very directional. You can even choose the shape that the light comes out of the fixture as. And then, to answer your question on berm, then, yes. I would, I would, for the sake of my customers and the residents, which I hope would be my customers also, I would want to make it very pleasing for them, you know. So, yeah.
Would you agree to, if that was a recommendation that was, not a recommendation, but a requirement to put the berm in, would you be agreeable to that?
We would. We're not, we're not trying to be difficult at all.
Yeah, because obviously, we're always concerned about neighborhood input.
Hundred, hundred percent.
And you've heard it as well through your...
Yep. So, I mean, 10 feet might be a little excessive, but, but yes, I mean, we would, we would be agreeable to a berm.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Dan Murphy, 866 North HWS Cleveland Boulevard, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 68022, representing myself and some of my other concerned neighbors. I'm a West Dodge Station Town Home Association member, which is the HOA closest to the property being discussed.
Dan, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Are you a proponent or opponent?
So, I'm a proponent of this project, but I'm seeking additional conditions.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm also a homeowner directly across the street from the proposed zoning change. So, I can actually bring this up right here. So, I'm just right off of HWS Cleveland Boulevard, right here. And since, since building my home over 10 years ago, I have understood that the lot would be developed someday. And as a good neighbor, I feel we must be responsible of the landowner's proposed use. So, I have no objections to the rezoning of the property. However, I do have two principal concerns as the proposal is presented today. First is, is already been discussed, but the screening right along HWS Cleveland Boulevard, which is right here. And I'm just apprehensive about how this development will affect my property value. Suppose the look and feel across the street is unsightly and swarming with headlights, vehicle activity. In that case, it will not only serve as annoyance to myself and the neighborhood, but could potentially deter future home buyers from purchasing our properties. I did attend the Edwards Village Point meeting on December 21st, and this exhibit was presented to us. And I, I think that is a very reasonable solution, but I hope that that berm would be tall enough to block out any sight of the cars or activity. So, that would be my first, you know, proposed condition. The second, living in this neighborhood for over 10 years, I'm, I'm next to a bunch of auto dealerships, but not immediately next to them. So, there's, there's a continued issue that, that always seems to happen, is the truck drivers unloading cars are parked in the middle of the street. They don't pull into the auto dealership, they park in the middle of the street. And I am concerned that these truck drivers might park in front of the school or on HWS Cleveland Boulevard. So, it's hard to drive around these drivers. You kind of have to poke around and make a dodge for it. So, sometimes it's a, it's a blind pass. And also, they're unloading in the middle of the night, at all hours of the day, slamming cars, et cetera. So, when I attended the meeting on December 21st, Caleb and Brett presented the plan as only having one entrance here, and that they would be sharing the two entrances down here of the Woodhouse property that is currently under construction. But when I reviewed the proposal that was uploaded to the online board's website, it did state that two unshared vehicular access points are proposed, one from Cummings Street and one from 184th Avenue. So, that would allow for another entrance right in front of that school. And if you're trying to drive past a truck, I have a big concern that some child is going to get hit, because, because people are not always going slow, and if they try to get around one of those trucks, and there's kids moving about, or schools getting, going in or coming out, it, it could be a safety concern. As well as there's just, there's just, it's harder to get in and out of my house. So, those are the two items I had today. Otherwise, I have no problem with there being a car dealership in front of my house. I think it's better than an apartment or an office building. So, the only, the only other thing I had was our HOA president, John Gilmore, had sent in a letter, and I just wanted to make sure the board received that.
Got it.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your time, Dan.
Dan, by the way, it's not a rezoning. This...
Okay.
Okay. It's just a amendment to the mixed-use development agreement. So, that's all. Are there any other proponents wishing to speak? Hold on, Caleb.
Okay. Yep.
Proponents we're looking for. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to, no more proponents? Do we have any opponents? Now, you can come forward.
Are you guys opponents?
My apologies, I can't hear very well back there.
That's all right.
My name's Mike Rhodes. I live at 1202 North HWS Cleveland Boulevard, pretty much cat a corner from where this is going to take place. I just want to make sure that my voice is heard before everybody tends to make a decision on something that seems to be pretty common. Just like was communicated a few minutes ago, we built about 15 years ago, and we do not want our property values to go down. Our property taxes just went up, so, it's the last thing we need. We talked about the light. I don't think there's any way to block light. You can point it down, but there's going to be 100 cars, it's going to reflect. We're concerned about that. It's right across the street from a grade school, and right across the street from a church, and right across the street from a quiet neighborhood. I tried to do my research and try to find another car lot that had those three things together, or even two of them, and I can't find them. There's other people here that are going to talk, and I'm going to let them talk. I'm going to be very quick. I just don't want to see any kids get hurt. I don't want to see our property values go down. And we already have lighting issues from the other car lots that are near us. And that's all I've got.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Any other opponents?
Howdy. I'm Daniel Grinstaff. I live at 18151 Lafayette Avenue. It's just essentially kitty corner to this, this proposed car lot. Oh, yeah, 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 that's right. Were you able to? I think a really big concern, so obviously, I've talked to a lot of my neighbors. We have a social media page where people can post and discuss this issue. A lot of people are concerned with just the proximity to the school specifically, and then also these neighborhoods, you know, even, even this, this lot is further back, you know, it's not right on the house lines, it's not right on these sidewalks where our kids are, four or five-year-old children are walking every day, you know. It's just, it's, it's, it's one thing to have how many, you know, five just on our side of 180th. You know, there's 15 other dealerships on the other side of 180th. At some point, it feels like it's not mixed use, it's just the 19th car dealership, you know. And I understand what you're saying about not rezoning, but it is, you know, whether we call it a major amendment or a special use, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know the exact verbiage. I did attempt to read the municipal code. You'd probably be better at describing exactly what it is, but, I mean, this is like right into a neighborhood. The majority of these other car dealerships are at least set back. They're not between the school and the neighborhoods. You know, there's just, it's dealership after dealership, the same group just developed this lot. At some point, honestly, an office building, a medical office, something that serves the community as mixed use, to me, would be a lot more compliant with the intended purpose of mixed use. And again, I'm not a lawyer. My understanding is that there's certain percentages of various properties, like whether it's fast food or something like that, there's a limit on the percentage of mixed use that can be. Fast food, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And, and here we are, just shoving dealership after dealership into this. I mean, you guys have probably driven by, it's like a mecca of car lots out there. But at some point, now we're getting into the neighborhood, and that's, that's the residents' concerns. That's every parent that I've talked to, is, is the noise of the PA system, the lights, the traffic, everything associated with that, and then being right next to a school. So, that's, we march strongly against this, and that's how the residents in the area feel. If you guys have any questions, or...
Are you a part of the homeowners' association?
Yes.
So, you realize, and I think Mr. Murphy brought this up, that this could have been developed into a number of different options, right?
Yep.
So, at some point, you knew something else was going to go in.
And, and we're not against that. You know, it, it's, we understand that. Everybody in the HOA knows that. But, you know, something that's a little bit more mixed use, more community-oriented, in that commercial retail vein, and not a seventh car lot, it just, it just doesn't make sense for, for our community in that area, in my opinion. And we understand it has to be developed, but just something, something else.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Dana. Any other opponents? Can I ask you, before you speak, give us new information, if you would.
The first person you ask.
I know. Unfortunately, you're the...
Matter of fact, you stole my thunder. I was going, my name is Steven Pitzer. I live at 18510 Indiana Street. I'm trustee on the SID 503. We have three HOAs in there, so, the confusion, the first person that spoke was from the Villas, the homeowners, being the condo association. I think they had 94 homeowners there. I represent, I'm also the board, president of the board of the West Dodge Station HOA. We're 233 single-family units, some of which are on HWS Cleveland, but not within the 300-foot rule. However, a lot of families with a lot of young children, probably a very high percentage of the children that go to West Dodge Elementary reside in our HOA. And then there's a third HOA, Silverleaf. However, it's quite further to the north, not directly impacted, kind of below line of sight from, from the car lot. So, I won't be redundant on all the items we talked about as far as traffic, children's safety. I'm sure you guys understand me from some of the comments you made. I understand you all appreciate that and the neighborhood perspectives around that. One thing I do want to mention is that John Gilmore, who is the president of the HOA, did also ask me to verify that you received his letter, because he was out of town. But in his letter, he's, he indicates that the, their HOA, the one most directly impacted, is opposed to this, and he lays that and articulates that very well. I sent an email through, Michael, in case I couldn't make it today. And then I'll also echo what Daniel said, is we have multiple portals for our homeowners to communicate. However, we didn't have a lot of time during the holidays to really consolidate and come to you guys more organized about the neighborhood. But in our, on our web Facebook page, I'm not a Facebook user, and then other portals, as the president, I received numerous feedback with all sorts of concerns. A hundred percent of it was opposed from, it doesn't represent the whole neighborhood, it represents a large, you know, percentage of that, that people were concerned. I wish we had a little bit more time to get our ducks in a row before today's meeting, but I understand timing. but I understand timing and stuff around the holidays, so, that's basically, I just wanna make it clear that at least two of the HOAs most directly impacted there are on record as being opposed to the car lot for all the reasons stated before myself. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you Steven. Any other opponents? Seeing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Caleb, Brett, either one of you wanna come up and discuss concerns from, you probably heard these concerns?
Yep. I just wanna clarify a couple things quickly. We've been working with city staff on the location of the entrances for, for a little bit now, and the, the direction we were given, just to clarify, is that there would be no driveway allowed off of HWS Cleveland, or off of 184th, which is the school side, that we would only have access to the shared use driveways that Woodhouse is already building currently, and then that we would have a new driveway off of Coming Street. So that was the direction that we were given from city staff, that would be the allowable connections to public streets. Completely understand the proximity to the residences and the West Dodge Station Elementary, and how driveway could be negatively impact them. Also, for the property itself, it does have wider setbacks than is standard, it has a thirty-five-foot setback off of HWS Cleveland, I believe it has a thirty-foot setback off of North 184th Street, and then a twenty-foot, and that is a parking lot setback, so the parking lots are inset, and then there's the row of trees in between. So there is more than a standard amount of distance in between the parking lot for the auto dealership and the, you know, public sidewalk. We completely share the same concerns about the safety of the students going to and from the neighborhood, and we, as Mr. Edwards mentioned, wanna be very good neighbors to everyone with our use and, and, you know, their routines on a daily basis. So, other than that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Hey Caleb, we're, I'm sorry. Go ahead. We're at the, they asked about drop-offs and where the trucks would be, you know, dropping off cars and, and unloading it at all times of the night, or, you know, in the morning. Do you know where that's gonna be? Will it be in the lot, or is it still on the street? And, yes please Brett.
Brett Edwards again. I probably need to answer that. We would have two options.
Brett, we need your address again.
Yep. Two-one-one-two-zero Greenview.
Alright, thank you.
The first one and the one I'd be most for would be dropping off at our other dealership location, which like was explained, is within the mecca of auto dealers in this area. So we have that available to us, that's very easy for us to do, we already have employees there and in place that would handle that, and then bring the cars over individually to, to this lot. If it were to be a car lot, again. The other option would be to allow for an off-street on, on this, this road here. I don't, I can't, I can't see that.
It's coming.
Right, that's coming. That would be the front of the store, and that's where the trucks would be, they would not be on Cleveland. Truck drivers are interesting people, and they don't take any more steps than they have to. So, they park right in front, and they unload right in front, and we work very quickly to get them gone, because they are usually right in front. But that would be secondary to the, to the first one, the primary one, just to be good neighbors, because that was brought up, and, and I could see, having driven around there, the issue with the way the roads are, you could come up on the hill, oops, and have somebody unloading a car unexpectedly, so.
What are your hours, and are you closed on Sundays?
We are closed on Sundays, our hours are till eight in, in the evening, and then on Friday and Saturday until six.
Basically, what, what time do you open, ten?
Eight, in the morning. Our service department is open, yeah. And, and people drop off cars, they do drop off cars at seven in, in the morning, so yeah.
If, if you had a good year, how many cars do you think you would, if, if there was a car lot, would you sell out of there?
For our organization, we generally try and have brands and, and size the staff to be able to sell in the six-hundred cars a year range, is what we'd like to do, we like to have an even split between new and pre-owned, so it'd be about three-hundred and three-hundred for the year.
So still not a big traffic draw as far as cars coming in, like a restaurant necessarily?
Well, yeah. We wish we had more traffic, but auto use is generally not very high traffic. We work very hard to try and have more traffic, but yes, you're correct, it's compared to like a Chick-fil-A for sure, or, or something like that, it's much lower traffic.
Brett, you made a, you made a comment that if this were to be a, a car lot, so do you have plan B in mind, if it's not a car lot?
We don't, we, we, we would not be for office building, that was brought up, I mean, there's a lot of vacant office space in the area. We're, we, we do real estate, some, as, as a family, but it's generally individual housing, and maybe a couple of commercial buildings. But, I mean, we are what we are, we're car dealers. That would be our primary use, we'd be most comfortable with that, because we know how to run, run that business. But yeah.
Brett, as a follow-up to that.
Yes sir.
So it's my understanding state law has a certain distance requirement from certain brands of vehicles?
That would depend on what the manufacturer has set, yeah, there are state franchise laws that protect dealers from being within the areas that the manufacturers have pre-described. They do have to get together with the dealers if they were to change those areas, which those lines do get redrawn from time to time.
Okay, and, and I was just bringing that up, 'cause obviously, there are a lot of dealerships here, and basically, I don't know what brands that your company deals, but, you know, are there options, I would assume, to do a dealership here?
There are, there are some, the brands aren't ready yet, or Omaha's not of a size to add the point quite yet, but those could be in the future. We recognize that that could come, and we do want to be in control of the, you know, buildable property if that opportunity were to arise.
Brett, are there, when you talked about, Jeff asked you about truck, car deliveries, trucks, any after-hour?
No.
Trucks coming?
There's two...
Once eight o'clock comes, it's done.
They don't even get to come at eight.
Okay.
Our, our service department is open until six, they need to deliver the vehicles prior to six PM. We, we don't, we don't want them coming later, yeah.
Gotcha, I just got a comment that, I know Daniel brought it up, how many car dealers do we need in the area? I drive by this, this area every day of my life, just about. And there's times when you drive by and you go, yeah, it just, there's a glow of light, and there's a lot of cars sitting out there.
Sure.
And then when it's time to go buy a car, it's nice to have everybody right there where I can go and, and, and buy a car without driving all over town, so. It's a mixed feeling, I understand where Daniel's coming from.
I, I agree too, but hopefully you're agreeable to one more, at least.
Alright, any other questions for Brett? Thank you Brett.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions before we hear from Eric?
I do have a question for Eric, I guess, we've talked in other cases about mixed use developments being, you know, too much of one type or whatever, you know, can you speak to the regulations that exist here? Is there a limit on car dealers in a mixed use area?
No, there is not a specific limit on auto dealerships in our mixed use code, there are two primary uses that do have a percentage attached to it, one of them is a minimum of ten percent office space. Of course, we have two large office buildings directly to the east and southeast with the Pinnacle Bank and the CSG Building, so, you know, taking away what has already been approved for office for this lot does not put them at a threshold be below that, that limit of the office requirement, so, and then the other use is, there is a limit on fast food at twelve percent of a mixed use area. So those are the only two specific uses that have a percentage cap or minimum with mixed use. And, you know, just to elaborate on that, I guess, a little bit, you know, this site is code compliant. You could say, yeah, there's a lot of auto dealerships here, or, you know, it's, it's kind of the idea. You know what, there was a third use that kind of led me to that, we added convenience storage, there's some percentage requirements, because there was some pushback on the number of, of convenience storage facilities, so I stand corrected, but that kind of led me to, you know, I'm not saying auto dealerships is one of those, but if, if staff is like, oh, I'm tired of seeing this use here and there, well, that's great, that's maybe a personal thought, and I'm not saying it is here for, for me by any means, but we review the codes and regulations that are put in place, it's not my say to, you know, dictate what the market, or, or the users or operators, so.
I mean, at the end of the day, the market will dictate, if somebody wanted to building office here, they would have done so long.
Hey Jorge, I'm gonna jump, I'm gonna jump in. I've been around long enough to when this was first thought of and, and developed out here. And it was, for lack of a better term, it was sold to us that this would be kind of the next, and we've seen and I've heard people talk about it for a half hour now, about how many dealerships are out here, and that was kind of the, that was the concept, is to group a number of the dealerships together in a certain area, they were moving from a part of town, and this is where a lot of the new dealerships wanted to be, and, and they wanted to rebuild, or, or build other dealerships out here. Not that this lot was thought of as an auto dealership at that point, but as, as we've heard and as we know and as we see all the time, things change, the market changes, you know, if you put eight or nine dealerships in an area, Greg said it well, probably a tenth once ago, probably eleventh once ago, it's, it's that mass of, of being around other auto dealerships, other competition, because it's easier for folks to, to shop, so, it was always envisioned, it's built out pretty much as planned for a lot of dealerships, and I think this is just the, the next phase of what the market's at least telling the, the, the auto dealers is, they, they want another auto dealership out there. So to kind of answer your question, no, we don't have, and I think you know that, and Eric did a really good job of answering it, we don't have a, a limitation on this use, I'll just say that this area, way back when, was kind of seen as the next auto dealership hub, for lack of a better term.
Just make one other, just side comment to what Dave was saying, the mixed use zoning is, is designed to be flexible, and be able to respond to what the market is saying, without going through a lot of gymnastics, and, and so the fact that this has been sitting here is, as you said, for some time, it's, it's not gonna be in the likely future that an office is gonna have an interest in it, but we do have somebody that's interested in it, to put a dealership there, and, and that fits within the mixed use car requirements, and so.
Yeah, so I guess I'll, I'll jump in there with the comments and commentary, yeah, there are a lot of uses in the mixed use zoning that could go here, either by right or with approval of a major amendment, which of course, this is going through. Sometimes we have major amendments to mixed use development agreements, because there's variance or waivers that are being requested or modified, that's not the case here, it's just specifically for one of the uses that requires extra scrutiny by the planning board and the city council, and of course, city staff, so I just wanna point that out. Regarding the, the birmingham, you know, this was touched on a little bit by the applicant, that is definitely one of the options in our staff report, we, we do want screening to be landscape variety, we don't want just a privacy fence, so, with the board, you could specifically recommend, if you want birmingham, I could read the language in, you know, the code section, you know, I'll just kind of give a, a brief summary, but, you know, as far as landscaping options, it can be, you know, hedge-like screen, or a random, or informal screen, evergreen, approved deciduous plant material, then also gets into birmingham, or a combination thereof with a minimum height of six feet, you know, for the planting, six feet within three years. So, if you do specifically want the, the birmingham, you could state that in the recommendation, otherwise, we will leave it as one of, one of the landscaping options that can be done. There is also a slope requirement that needs to be met, be met if you do have the birmingham, but within the thirty-five-foot buffer yard, there's definitely ample space to, to meet that. As, Dan brought up the, the comment about the access points, yeah, my apologies, that wasn't worded best in the report. We acknowledge there's the, you know, I guess, the, the lot closer to West Dodge has the two access points, and then as Caleb described, this new lot with the lot line adjustment has that one access point on the southeast corner off of Coming, so I acknowledge the report didn't read that the best, and, so my apologies on that. Regarding the offloading of trucks, that cannot occur in the right way, I'm sure it's taking place with some of these dealerships in this area, but, you know, the city does not want the unloading of materials, whatever the material may be, whether it's Forty-Fifth and Dodge, or whether it's out here, 184th and Coming Street, so, make sure the operations are done accordingly, if that means a shuttle from another lot has to take place, if they can't enter into the site through one of the access points. And then Steven had talked about making sure that we receive letters, yes, we received about ten to twelve letters of correspondence for this case. So, I don't think I have anything else to add unless you have additional questions. We touched on, you know, obviously, this has been an approved office use, this has been zoned mixed use for, I believe, about twenty years now, so, we're not changing the zoning, but it is obviously a major amendment to incorporate this potential use type. So staff recommends approval of a major amendment to the mixed use development agreement for West Dodge Station, subject to five acceptable signed copies of the amendment prior to forwarding to city council.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, did you wanna add anything?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to add...
You can make the motion.
I'll make the motion then. I'd like to make the motion to approve the, approval of the major amendment to the mixed use development agreement for West Dodge Station. That includes birmingham as part of the screening process on the development, subject to submittal of the five, subject of submittal of five acceptable signed copies of the amendment prior to forwarding the request on to city council.
I have a clarification question, you said that includes birmingham, are you saying...
Let me, so...
Requires birmingham.
Okay, requires birmingham, but I guess, the height of the birmingham could be important, because the, the screening requires to be six feet, but sometimes you could have a three-foot berm with landscaping on top, so I think...
I'll just say to meet the city requirements under whatever section that is, the six feet?
Okay.
Would that be acceptable?
It is, it's, I just wanna make sure it's clear of what height of birmingham compared to a combination of birmingham and landscaping.
A minimum of six feet.
Of the birmingham.
Of the birmingham, but it could be more than six feet.
Okay.
So how does, how does that work? I like the recommendation as it's written, I wouldn't vote yes to that. So how, how does that work when they vote this call?
Well, if we get a second, then you can vote no to that.
Director Fanslaw, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Mike, I just have a question for you. I don't, I don't have the plan in front of me, but, I don't know how much, is, is it fifteen feet of green space, I'll look at Mike or Eric. So it's thirty-five foot of green space, okay, so typically, if we've got a fifteen-foot landscape requirement, this is obviously larger than that, just, so it's really not important in this case, but if it was only fifteen feet, you really can't berm six feet in fifteen, but if it's thirty-five, it would work, so.
Yeah, and this is just, you know, to meet the, you know, to try and appease some of the neighborhood complaints or issues that they brought up as well, and I think that the, the developer and, and owners were acceptable to that requirement, so that's why I mentioned it.
Jennifer, do we need to have Mike restate?
Yes.
His entire motion?
Yeah, 'cause I won't vote for it right now.
Okay.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Go ahead.
That this is just on the HWS Cleveland?
Yes.
Frontage, okay.
Just on, on that side.
Just wanna make sure that's in there somewhere, 'cause we do not have the room on all the other sides.
Okay, so maybe you give me what, what you might like to see, you, you don't understand what my intent is with the birmingham, I'd like to see the birmingham, the minimum of six feet, okay? Give me, maybe give me some...
Hold, hold on, Jennifer wanted to make a point.
No, I was just gonna answer your question, that it might be helpful, and it sounds like this is where you're going, Mike, to restate your motion.
Right.
And then to answer the second question is, once you make that motion, if there is a second, then that is the motion that is voted on, if there's any disagreement with the conditions that you have added, those individuals are free to vote no.
Sure, I understand that.
May, may I add, just, just for your knowledge?
The second, we, okay.
I'll say my name.
Dave's calling, yep.
Sorry.
Name and address again.
Brett Edwards, two-one-one-two-zero Greenview. So headlights are under four feet of trucks and everything, so a birmingham of, of six feet might be a little, you know, a berm of six feet. Now, a total, like you're saying, at least six feet is good, but I would, I would prefer if the birmingham could be somewhere in like the forefoot to allow for mowing, you know, safely and things like that, so they're not, you know, in Council of Us, I'm, I live on hills, and it's pretty sketchy, you know, as you're mowing, you know, but just, to keep that in mind.
To your point for mowing, you, you've got thirty-five feet to work with.
You do, so it would, it would help a lot with, with that, and, and keep us in the So it would, it would help a lot with, with that, and, and keep us in the 35 feet. At six feet, doing math, you might be getting into where we'd have 40 feet of setback, you know, but just, which would, would still, you know, we would still achieve, at four feet of a berm, you are definitely covering any headlights of any vehicle.
All right, so let me ask, Eric, so if it, if I make that four feet of berm with landscaping, would that be?
To meet the six foot requirement.
Yeah, to meet the six foot requirement, would that be?
Yeah, so if you had a four-foot berm, you would need additional, it's called hedge-like screen or continuous shrubbery. You wouldn't have to get specific in your recommendation, because it still, you know, would need to meet that code section, but if you were specific on a four-foot, if you, if that's what you wanted to recommend, you could say a minimum four-foot birmingham with additional landscaping to meet the screening requirement, something like that.
Okay, so let me restate my motion then.
Can I, can we discuss a little bit further? I, you know, I don't know how deep in the weeds we want to-
Why don't we see, why don't we see if I get a second for this first, okay?
I think it's important to discuss it beforehand, because I don't even know where anybody sits on it yet, and I don't want to go too far yet. I mean, I'm okay with you moving forward, I just want to state, first, I don't know how deep in the weeds we want to get in terms of design specifications. I think there's, maybe we get too far in the weeds, no pun intended. But, so is there a way, so as the recommendation's currently written, it has to satisfy the planning department's definition of screening, or, and what exactly are you gonna be looking for in the, in how it's written now?
Well, so there has to be a combination of birmingham and landscaping that goes to a height of six feet.
Has to be a combination of birmingham.
Yep, so that, well, if you require the birmingham, I mean, otherwise, it just has to be six feet, you know, of grown landscaping within a time period, time period of three years.
Because I think, I guess where I'm coming from is, I actually do think screening is really important, and that's because it is so close to the homes. But, you know, trees and bushes and things like that are even better to look at than a berm, you know, to be honest. So I think the combination is probably the best route, but I don't want to get too far down the road of dictating, I'm not so sure that's the job of the board is to dictate exactly the design aspects of a development, but I could be wrong about that.
I think it's well within this board's right to recommend specific height of birmingham, if that's what is chosen to pursue. Yeah, sometimes you don't want to get too specific, but I think in this circumstance with, with the neighborhood to the west and the points that brought up, I mean, I think it's valid to want to require, but yeah, you don't want to get into the specific height of the lands, like, I think you take it to an extent, but if you want birmingham, you should be clear to what the height of that birmingham should be.
Okay.
Okay, and what's gonna happen is, the mixed-use development agreement, they'll have to submit revised plans and some language that, that shows, you know, if the birmingham is required, and whatever, whatever other landscaping to meet that minimum of six feet.
Eric, if, if we're, if we're trying to tighten this up for the neighborhood, do we want to look at also making sure that there is no dropping off of cars in the streets, unloading at that point?
Yes.
Well, it's a little tricky, because the major amendment, we can't really apply conditions, I mean-
Make sure it's not in the public right of way.
Well, you can state it on the record, but, I mean, that's already a city policy and, you know, regulation code. I'm looking around, I'm not sure where that falls under, but we don't typically list conditions with major amendments to mixed-use agreements. I'm okay with the birmingham language and landscaping being included, because that's something that needs to be addressed on the plans before it goes to council. But in a case, you know, typically with mixed-use agreements, we don't list items like we do for a use permit, and some of that's the way that resolutions versus ordinances are done, and that, that is getting in the weeds.
Is there any harm in, in making that as part of the motion, that no deliveries are allowed in the public right of way? Is there any harm in?
There's no harm, but just note that in ordinance document, right, Mike? Within the ordinance document, there's not going to be a specific stated condition. Now, it'll be on the cover letter document that goes to city council, but, so it's just the way that resolutions and ordinances are set up. So, Jennifer, I don't know if you have more to add on that?
Sorry. Are we talking about the landscaping condition or the street condition?
Street condition.
Okay. You know, if you want to make a statement that you make it clear on the record that dropping off of cars in the street right of way is not allowed, you can. If you want to make it clear that the approval of the amendment is obviously conditioned on complying with all city codes, you can, therefore, a violation of the city code would then be a violation of the major, of the major use agreement, or mixed-use agreement. Does that make sense?
What I'm saying is, I, I don't want numbers one, two, three listed as conditions. That's not how mixed-use agreements are treated, because it's an ordinance versus a resolution. But, like Jennifer said, you can clearly state it for the record, it goes in the minutes, it goes on the cover letter document that goes to city council. It's clear to stay, say it, just don't list conditions numerically.
So, does it have to be part of the motion? It can just make a statement when you make your vote, that if someone wants to make that statement, does it ever, does it have to be part of the motion?
Well, basically, this whole discussion will be entered into the minutes that are part of the record anyway, so whatever you're comfortable with, I guess.
I think Brett may have mentioned that there would not be any, there's no drop-offs in the public right of way. You mentioned that in the public meeting, correct? It'd all have to happen on your property. Is that correct? I, I thought that's what you said.
And before 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna restate the motion then. I'm gonna move approval of the major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for West Dodge Station, including four feet of birmingham with landscaping to meet the six-foot screening requirement, subject to submittal of five acceptable signed copies of the amendment prior to forwarding the request onto city council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
I don't like the four feet, but I'll say yes.
Franklin?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero. I'm sorry, six to one.
Okay, thank you guys.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Moving on, agenda item number 30K, C10-23-193. Applicant Woodsonia 168 State 3 LLC, request approval of major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for the hill. Location northeast of 168th and State Street. And Larry, you are up.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Larry Jovan-
No C.
I know, yes. Members of the board, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is, I think, what I would call is more of a philosophical and policy-type discussion that we're gonna have today. Huh? A new one? So, I, I, well, I figured I'd start there, how about that? So, so obviously, this is on the northeast corner of 168th and State, this is the mixed-use area here, and of course, what we're talking about today is the 12% limitation on fast food restaurants. And I guess what I would say is, in this particular case, maybe the percentage is not what's important because of the constraints on the site and because of the size of the site. This intersection right here is a, designated as a 60-acre mixed-use center. It could have up to 60 acres in all four quadrants for mixed-use types of development. In this particular case, the southeast, the southwest, and the northwest are all either developed or in the process of being developed for residential housing. So, of the 60 acres, there's no ability to have 60 acres. So, effectively, what you would have is 20 acres, but the problem, and why you don't have 20 acres, is because you've got this creek that runs right through the area that would otherwise be allowed to be developed for mixed use. So what ends, what ends up happening is, you then have a 20-acre mixed-use site that really, because of its physical constraints, can only be developed for about 10 acres or 9.78 acres. And so, what I would say about that is that we're requesting the ability to have two fast food restaurants on two lots, and that's really the idea. And the two lots that we're talking about are lots 398 and 401, these two lots here along State Street. And the idea isn't so much to comply with the percentage per se, or exceed the percentage per se, it just seems kind of odd to have a mixed-use development where you only have one fast food restaurant, where i- is that really a destination for people to go to if there isn't a choice? And so, I, I think the idea is here, is that this isn't precedent-setting in the sense that, you know, everyone's gonna come in and blow out the 12%, you know, limitation on fast food restaurants. Why? Because if they could show the same things that we have in this particular case, which, as you know, land is unique, its characteristics are unique, every site and every development's different, the fact that you have only 10 acres of a mixed-use area out of 60 acres, and the fact that you have a creek that limits its ability to be developed for mixed use, the percentage sort of in this case, if you ask me, is almost irrelevant, because you're going from 12% to 19%, but that's not what really is the deal here. What really is the deal here is to at least have two lots that are available for fast food restaurants. So you have some demand being met here, you don't go to 168th and State and you have one choice, you know, it's whatever, you know, and there, there's nothing else. And so, my thought is, you know, under a mixed-use development, we've used this, I've used this standard before, but under a mixed-use development, mixed-use developments are really zoning by contract, right? And so it's by agreement. And so we can't go to the zoning board of appeals, if you will, to show there's a practical difficulty or a hardship. But if you sort of apply that same standard here in the mixed-use world, you kind of have that situation. You have an intersection that has 60 acres available, but you have a creek that reduces, well, you only have 20 really, because the other three corners are developed for residential uses. There's no chance there'll ever be a mixed-use commercial office or anything else. And then you have a creek that reduces this further to 10 acres. And so, to me, this concept of a practical difficulty or hardship, I think, kind of doesn't make this precedent-setting in the sense that, you know, people aren't gonna come in and say, you know, they have a 40-acre deal and they want to blow the 12% of fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, you know, out of the water. I, I think in this particular case, what you have is a very unique set of circumstances, a mixed-use area that's not really being developed for mixed use. You have a very small mixed-use center that is constrained by this physical constraint, which is the creek. And we're trying to have a viable mixed-use area, albeit 10 acres, but it seems to me having one fast food restaurant sitting all by itself without one more seems a little strange, you know, from a, a supply standpoint, and from a demand standpoint of people, what people want and what people are looking for. And so, that's kind of the argument, and I, and I think, you know, here where you have three corners that are, are developed or in the process of being developed for residential, why not give them that opportunity to have two choices of places to eat? And the two places are in these two locations here. That's the thought. I'm happy to, I understand the recommendation is for denial, but my thought is to always keep an open mind and have the discussion. And again, it's more of a policy, physical, you know, just a, a policy-type discussion that we can have here. And, and again, I don't think this is precedent-setting, because I don't think anyone else can come in here with these facts, and if they do, hey, great, right? I think it would be very strange and very odd if it did occur, but this is where we find ourselves. So I'm happy to answer any questions, happy to have the discussion. That's my argument.
So Larry, did your clients know that they were buying property with a creek on it?
Well, of course they did, and, and they understood the 12%, you know, limitation on fast food restaurants. But the idea is to really look at, you know, this development from, and, and apply that sort of zoning board of appeal standard of a practical difficulty or hardship, which you can't do in the mixed-use arena, because it's zoning by contract. And so, we did this before on, on the Hilton Garden with their signage. I mean, they were sitting in a hole and we let them have a, a sign on the peak, if I remember right. And we use that same type analysis, that there's this practical difficulty or hardship that is not in the mixed-use world, but sort of that same concept or principle can be applied to allow someone to adequately develop and utilize their property. And I don't think this is precedent-setting. I don't think people can come in and say, gee, point to this 168th and State Street, and say, you know, I have, you know, 40 acres and I'm gonna blow the 12% out of the water, I want 15 fast food restaurants, because I can, because this case. I don't think that gets there, because I think there's so many restrictions and so much uniqueness about this particular set of circumstances, that I just don't think you can make that argument ever again, unless you have this. So, that's the idea.
Okay, thank you Larry.
Thank you. I'm happy to answer questions or have the discussion, for sure.
Any other proponents? Seeing none of their any opponents. Seeing none, close public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Mike, you look like you were gonna, oh, go ahead.
I, in terms of demand, I, I kind of tend to agree with Larry that like, puts one more, but it's just hard, because I think there's just, we're bumping up against the technicality, and so I think that's always hard. I, I guess I don't have anything very big to add, other than like, I kind of empathize with it, but at the same time, like in a philosophical sense, and from a demand point of view and knowing the market, but I just don't know what we can do when there's just kind of this hard-fast rule that the planning department has a precedent for, I guess. Just want to state that on the record.
Okay. Mike, were you gonna say, or are you just scooting up in your seat?
All right, just adjusting.
Eric?
So there's a portion of the master plan that really gets into more specifics about the different sized mixed-use intersections and centers that you're probably not aware of, because, you know, it's outside of the zoning code, but it has a lot of good information in there, and it, it does really contribute to several of the ideas of, of the mixed-use as far as, you know, how far, you know, mixed-use can be, quarter mile, quarter mile gap of non-office commercial. And one of those components is, is that it does talk about what are the specific uses that are, are really applied to, you know, a mixed-use intersection of a certain size. And like, like Larry said, yes, this intersection is a 60-acre center, but obviously this is developed more like a 10-acre center, because, you know, maybe partly because of the drainage way, but also partly because of how the other quadrants of the intersection have developed with residential. But, you know, so taking that idea and concept, looking what really serves as a 10-acre center, the master plan talks about typical facilities include convenience stores, you know, gas stations, ATM, small offices, and shops. Really, it's that when you get to that 30-acre center, when it talks about freestanding, fast food restaurants are typically only appropriate for the large mixed-use areas, 30 and up. So, you know, I, we've had this conversation with Larry, and, and so I think he knows where we stood going, going into this, and we do have the code requirement of the 12%. The city is not comfortable in, in making precedent, I understand the idea of it's one versus two lots, and yeah, it's not 165-acre center, but the code is in place, and so that is where the city stands. So we are recommending denial.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to deny?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks Larry.
Thank you Larry, good seeing you.
But you did great.
Aren't you glad you changed our minds? What public office are you running for?
Okay, we- Okay, we are done with the-
We put in the hours, man, there's nobody here. Were you guys here for any particular case?
I did come in late, I was curious about number 12.
Number 12 must have been on consent.
That was approved.
What do they have planned there?
Yeah, well, let us, let us finish our business and-
Just hang tight, you waited this long.
Yep. Okay, it's time for the election of vice chair and chair. Do we have a motion for the chair? Move to our nomination and motion.
Greg Rosenbaum, Chair. Second.
Okay. We had a nomination, do we have to have a motion for approval? Do we have a motion for approval?
Aye, yes.
All right, and a second. All right, there we go, all right.
Can I second my nomination?
Yeah. Kathy, you record the vote, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Absolutely not.
Approved, six to one.
Do we have a nomination for vice chair?
Dominic, Dave, Rosehacker, Vice Chair.
Do we, do we have a motion? And a second. Okay, I guess that you said it right, yeah. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
No.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to one.
Do we have a motion for the December pre-meeting and public meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from both the December meeting and pre-meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please record the vote, Kathy.
Sotolongo?
Dave.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to one.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? Motion and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Before I vote, thank you all very much for the support for chair, I really appreciate it, thank you. And happy new year to everybody that we've had.
Happy new year. What's your vote?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.